Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the spirit of God, life, religion, one nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So you're good. Very grateful I didn't get full treatment.
Welcome everybody to our meeting. Beautiful morning out there. It's like a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Some moved.
On favor? Alright. Prove the minutes of the March 3rd, 2025 regular meeting.
Some moved.
Second.
On favor?
Alright.
Prove the claims filed county auditor for $240,116.17.
Some moved.
I'll make the second, but I do have a question. Are we, are we okay double dipping? Are we making sure that we're not double dipping between ARPA and CAT grants and conversations like that? I assume you're moving that funding over.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Alright, that was a.
Yep, because every, any ARPA funds that are spent have to be approved by the board of supervisors by resolution before anything can be spent.
Yes, sir.
So.
Just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something. Appreciate that. Moved in second.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright. Prove this special election claims filed county auditor for $1,297.55.
Some moved.
Okay.
On favor?
Alright.
Approve the employee claims filed county auditor for $981.95.
Some moved.
Second.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright. Approve the monthly report from the quarters office for $10,405.9.
Some moved.
Second.
On favor?
Alright.
And approve the monthly financial reports.
Uh, some of those balances are getting pretty low. Do we need to talk to some of those department heads and see if they're okay or?
The department heads getting on play reports. Um, I would suggest if you do have a concern, I mean, that's your choice to reach out to the department head, but there you should be watching them. We watch them very closely also in our office.
Yeah, okay.
So they have, my major major, they have four months left in their budgets.
And obviously the, the reports are valid, so I'll make the motion to approve them.
Second.
On favor?
Alright.
For discussion, place on file of following manure management plans out back Middlefield Township, Section 35. Slattery Brothers Farm 2, Middlefield Township, Section 28. Schuman Site, Newton Township, Section 07. Washington Township, Section 24. Erickson, Middlefield Township, Section 30. Five Sisters Blend. Sumner Block Township, Section 30. Fremont Land Farms LC, Fremont Township, Section 2. Mike Robinson, Madison Township, Section 21. Five Sisters LLC, Sumner Township, Section 19.
Some moved. Second.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, we get to celebrate.
Yeah, we are.
Um, Ben, your holder, there was a copy of a resolution to set the public hearing for the FY26 proposed budget.
He wanted that on April 7th?
Yes, because, um, now I don't remember the date and I don't have the paper. So next Monday at 8:30 is when the proposed property tax levy meeting will be. And then I need time to publish the actual budget between the 10 and 20, so I would like it on the 7th, so then I have time to get everything filed with the Department of Management before the deadline.
Did you want that at 8:30? Does that would have to be separate?
No, the proposed budget can be during a regular board meeting. It's the one, next Monday at 8:30 has to be a complete separate meeting. So we'll do that hearing, public hearing, and then once that's completed, then at 9:00 AM, we'll start the actual regular board meeting.
Okay, so what time on the 7th?
I have 9:15 on April 7th.
Okay, I would make a motion to set the public hearing on April 7th at 9:15.
Okay.
On favor?
Alright.
And then just so you all know, all the mailers did go out. Um, I finalized that Saturday afternoon. Oh, a little over 9,000 letters.
So we'll get them through.
But I have to have them by 15th, so I was hoping to have it done by Friday, but we had a software malfunction across the state, so oops, I had waited to like fix it.
I'll mention that, Constance.
I would have to go back and look at the contract by the time they printed it, put everything together in the post stage, but I'm guessing probably 10 to 15 grand to mail it.
Okay.
This can't tell them nothing more than what it told them last year?
Correct, 100%.
Okay. Uh, Cam's special election.
We can do that quick. So this was the Starmont School. Guys can each have one of these. They were voting on a public measure to renew their PEPOL, and it was also increasing it quite a bit. And then they also had a vacancy on the school board. And so they were filling that. We had a total of 49 voters for the day out of a possible 560-some in the Starmont District and Buchanan County. So we'll do the public measure first. Is that what's listed first on yours or is it the vacancy?
It's a vacancy.
Okay, we'll do the vacancy. So there was a total of 47 votes for the vacancy. 30 went to Douglas Puffett and 17 went to Cheryl Northup, and then we had two under votes. And then for the Starmont, for the public measure EY, we had yes for 24 and no for 25. So I just need a motion to approve the canvas. I need your signatures on some documents, and then I will forward the final results up to Clayton County, who's the control county.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept this. In this.
Second.
On favor? Alright. Let's go ahead to discuss long care bids.
That is, we've had inquiries in my office on whether you're putting it out for bid, the contract buzz states that it can be renewed, if it's going to be at the same price as last year. It's truly up to you guys if you want to put it out, advertise it and put it out for bid. And that would be for public health, food and food pantry.
I'm fine with going with the existing contractor, but uh, it's up to you guys.
Well.
Seems like the right thing to do is to bid it out. If anybody else submits a bid, then you'd say that we didn't try.
When we submit this out for bid, can we also include potentially spraying for weeds at the courthouse? Asking.
Seems like the right thing to do.
I mean, I like dandelions and I think they're beautiful, sunny flowers, but I know some veterans really don't want them. We have the Veterans Memorial up front.
Only concern with that is I know the contractor that you guys had last year for those two, um, buildings, I don't know if they would have the capability or the equipment to do the lawn spray. So I wonder if maybe we should just look into hiring a specialized company that does that. And I, I agree, we do have more dandelions than we do grass.
I love them. I used them for complaints.
Yeah, I would.
Oh, I heard really complaints.
We control a separate issue.
Okay. Right. We can put this out for bid and and deal with the weed control on another day.
I'll have to get moving on this pretty quick because the way the weather is, it's going to become non-dormant.
Right.
You need that in a motion or?
If you're gonna put it out for bid, yes, I need it in a motion.
I'll make the motion that we put out the lawn care for bids.
On favor?
Alright.
I would, um, should we set a date for opening those bids? I mean, you're looking, I mean, I could possibly get it to go into the paper this week. It needs to run two times, so that's the 12th and the 15th. You want to try and open on April 7th?
Yes.
Works for me that you're early as convening, I mean.
Okay, um, we have budget hearing at 9:15. Let's do 9:30.
Do you want to include that in your motion key?
Sure, I'll end my motion to, who's been the public hearing and the possible for the bids.
Second.
Yep.
On favor?
Hi.
Alright.
About 9:10.
Okay. 9:10, open bids for the sale of the Taylor Grid.
Okay, you guys all should have a bitch seat that I gave you. We have received three bids.
You guys will.
I wouldn't have him.
How about Dale's here? It's still $11.
Okay, first bid that I opened is from Dale Preed. And it's for $1,000. Second bid is from Jerry Slattery, and that is for 1,500. And the third bid is from Ryan Donley, and that is for 500.
Yeah, hand this like we normally do, we'll be offered the opportunity to raise their bids.
Yep.
So at this point, the high bid is $1,500, so if anybody had a bid, it would like to.
At least a bid.
Give me 18.
Sorry?
18.
1,800, okay.
3,000. 22. 24.
That's Brian again.
95.
26.
3,000.
31.
33.
34.
35.
36.
38.
39.
4,000.
41.
42.
43.
44.
45.
46.
47.
48.
49.
5.
51.
52.
53.
54.
55.
Black and yellow.
Anymore? Okay, 5,500. So the winning bid would be Jerry Slattery for $5,500. Congratulations.
Hope so. Hope they're good when I get her part.
We need a moment to accept that bid.
Can make a motion to accept Jerry Slattery's bid at $5,500.
On favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Jerry, the timing might be pushed back into early June.
Yeah, I talked to Stacy.
I'd be good, I'd be good for you.
Yeah.
Congrats on the kids.
Good.
Lot of work, you know, all the, all the years ago. You know, and even competing more is at a circus, you know, you know.
Yeah.
It is, I mean. No, I know. I'm starting.
No.
Yeah. My Tim Rogers, let me grab this. And I'll assure you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion with, uh, our public health director, Griffin, maybe the director, Julie Davidson, I don't think she's really serious.
She's online.
She's online. And discussing with the opioid stuff.
She shouldn't be on Zoom. I thought she was gonna call in. There she is.
Yeah. I apologize, I had to head to Des Moines.
I'm gonna hand them their papers and you can go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, we had met with the Substance Use Disorder Coalition and Opioid, and we're looking at ways to promote awareness and outreach activities. Um, one of the things that we are doing is, uh, some bags for the Sheriff's Department, Police Department to hand out at, um, post-prom when they're doing, uh, the trikes for impaired driving. And when we looked at our budget, we only had $1,000 allocated for that. And we were thinking that getting a bunch of giveaways with messages on, on the bags, we have one pill can kill. We're looking at different messages that are opioid related to do on things if we wanted to do, um, the fair again next year, do 4th of July parade, different events. So we were wanting to see if we can increase the outreach and awareness item from 1,000 to 6,000. And all the other thing was, we have $16,000 allocated for, it says three secure medication drop boxes. They did not cost anywhere close to that. We've only spent about 6,200. So we were thinking if we could change that to take out the three, that way we think Jessup may want one. It allows us a little more flexibility using that money still for the medication drop boxes.
Um, I just came up with an idea too, as far as the outreach goes. What about popcorn bags at football games? Because that's for young catcher teenagers.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know someone does them for St. John's games, but I don't know about the public, so I can.
There are a lot of things like that, that would be great ideas, um, if we just have the ability to use, to increase the line item.
That's a great idea.
I go with you, increasing that line item. I mean, the more people we can prevent.
Which 1,000 was not. We started looking at signs and more, and even just, most things cost like a dollar, whatever it is, and so I mean, that adds up real quick.
Well, sadly, it's so limited what you can actually use these slugs for. If we can find something that's really worthwhile, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's been really good to partner with the Substance Use Prevention Coalition because it's somewhat known in the community, and we're really trying to enhance the awareness efforts of that group, so just tying in the opioid and stuff is.
I really like the idea of the popcorn bags. That, to me, it's gonna get to a lot of young families and.
Definitely.
And, and you know, you could tie in, uh, all the complex here in town, or the baseball softball complex.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Even possibly the little legal organizations throughout the county.
Mm-hmm.
They all have their own concession stands, so if you're doing the popcorn bags, I'm sure they would be more than happy to take the donation.
Save them the expense of buying.
So maybe, I mean, if you, right, I don't know the cost of those. I mean, we could, if you want to increase it more, just to allow us to do as many things as we can. I think, um, you know, with the limitations that we have for opioid and prevention, I think, um, just getting the word out and, and getting the, even the Narcan can save lives, messages, different ones like that. So when you. But I would think six, an extra 5,000 would get us quite a bit.
So, but another, be taking that up to 11,000? Instead of six?
There's currently 156,666.89 in the account.
So that's. Chris Al.
And we've already purchased, yeah, and got boxes, the vending machine, so our big item.
I think the bag is pretty expensive, it's a pretty costly.
I agree. And I think we tried to look at different promotional items that would target each age demographic, so hopefully we can touch families throughout. And our messaging too will be different.
You need to hit the elementary and get things sent home. Little kids take things home and they're proud of it. And that's where the education needs to begin, is with the little kids, they'll get it home and, because you know, quite often it could be their parents that are involved in this activity.
So we have a curriculum in the school and she does it in second grade, so we asked her what she would. It'd be nice if she could send the kids home with something. Um, they have a workbook, but, um, yeah, so have something else to send home, something fun, like you said, yeah, absolutely.
And those are places we're looking at targeting is like when they do cupcakes with cops. Um, you know, we could do giveaways there that have our message on. So we are, are targeting from really preschool or younger all the way through elderly. If we can go to any fairs for older, um, the downtown when they do it at Farmer's Market, there's just so many opportunities to get items out that have our message.
So changing that line item to 11,000?
If, that's, that's fine with us.
That would be great.
I think after you get calls and things, we can look at it, revisit it and see if we need to get any more.
Yes, we do have both of those meetings coming up, so, um, the Substance Use and the Opioid Settlement Funds Meeting.
And some of the companies, like, you want to work with, uh, maybe a discounted price or something.
Signs and more has been good. Once you pay their initial like setup fee for your logo, then you're, you're good. Um, so it's, they've been really easy to work with, so.
Do you have any thoughts on this kind?
No, I was just, if, if you do like popcorn bags, you just donate those to the schools. That's a word. And I just, and something we should reach out and say, just pick in a bag, um, and be kind of. Make sure we have the right size bag for them.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah. I'll reach out.
We'd work with the schools and, um, Carson Rec in each town.
And one thing we had talked about was stickers, so if somewhere had like a box or something that doesn't work, we could still work to get our sticker and logo put on.
Oh, that's true.
When we were doing a promotion, the build of dog park in Independence, we had a, we bought a bunch of those candy bags, we called them like dime candy bags, but, uh, and we had looked at doing stickers and we got a possibility at that point. And we ended up getting a rubber stamp, stamp on them.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but it was, you know, very unprofessional. I mean, something printed would, especially with this type of message, would be much more appropriate, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
You want to sit there with a stamper?
Yeah. Right.
And we're gonna continue to get money, so.
Yes.
And has to be spent on this.
Correct.
I think organizations would be welcoming you with open arms if they got something like that. And it's a great message.
I know for, with Public Health, we did, um, the coffee sleeves at M's and at Gedney. They, um, we had a grant fund that paid for coffee sleeves that had immunization stuff on them. And so I, we can always reach out places like that to, um, those were, they went through tons of them, just gets the message out. I mean, they're not really looking at it. I mean, it's just there, right there, so I think there's a lot of cool things that we could do. Um, and I just thought this dude, the Public Health is gonna be at the, um, Buchanan County Health Center's having a senior health fair. April-ish, so we'd have to see what we can get. Um, it's like that first week of April, but if we could get something done, um, before then, that would be a good place to take them to.
I think that's a great idea.
We have a list of things that we thought about ordering. Um, do you want us to talk about those here or just in the meeting? Okay. So I think our drawstring bags, we were targeting kind of the teenage population with, planning to give those out at post proms. Also at some of those health fairs, so people can carry all their goodies around instead of full hands. Um, like a flower highlighter could go for anyone in an office setting or kiddos who have it all in one, um, with a nice message in the center. And then we did like a football squeeze, um, toss trust ball, a chip clip magnet. We decided everyone has those on their fridge and they stay there forever, so it'll catch someone's eye as they enter the home or leave. Um, like a push pop cube, those are super popular, the fidget toys. Um, we found sticky notes were super low cost and you can get your message on every sticker, so if we could get those into the hands of some local businesses, every note you pass is gonna have our logo and, um, to tie in the opioid funds, we would have a saving, like a saying like one pill can kill or Narcan saves lives. Um, I think we're looking at more of the like sensory type things, but this is what we've come up with so far to kind of target all demographics.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And right now we were coming in just at about $3,600 with what we had, so we'll have some room to expand with some additional funds.
Let's get the message out there to as many people as we can.
When's the next distribution of funds coming out to us, you know?
It is so random. They just, they just come. Yep, and then Sean usually sends me an email, got more money and.
Every month or two almost, um, there's some kind of funds.
Very random amounts too.
Yes, small amounts, large amounts, it's hard to know.
Good, anything else?
I don't think so.
I think you have some good ideas.
Yeah, we're excited.
So you guys should approve to increase that budget line item.
I would make a motion to increase that budget line item to $11,000. Thank you.
Line item four, I think we need to remove the, the number three and add in Jessup potentially.
Just say, yeah, if we could just take the number out, just so it says secure medicine disposal.
And then take out the, yeah, the one through Fairbank Public Health building part.
Yeah. Just what's very vague, I guess. Um, just so we'll say secure medication drop boxes, so.
And amend number four to just say, secure medication drop boxes, leave everything off of it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Second. On favor? Alright. Pretty good.
I guess that PD, um, the chief saw, or he had sent some of our stuff and he saw and he's like, oh, I don't want one in Jessup. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you.
And just something little add on, kind of that same thing, we did set up the Fairbank Dropbox, um, up at City Hall there. I didn't do that out last week, and it was there well over two weeks, and I didn't weigh it directly, but I bet there's close to, probably 30 pounds worth of nutrition in that.
That's great.
Good, yeah.
Upstairs in the old jail, we had looked at that old balance drop box. It was up there and we talked maybe about repurposing that. Is that?
That's mine.
John, he's waiting to. I'm in front of territory.
I'm gonna use that for.
Hope that someday I can get rid of it, but that's going to be up to legislation changes.
You ready?
And when that time comes, I'll let you know, John.
I'm still kicking, above ground. Oh, see, I keep trying to clean that out.
It's a lot better. There's a few things we keep scratching away up there where it's, it's so much better. Get off that elevator now. We got some stuff that I have to take some TVs and stuff to the landfill, but just trying to get all that stuff, take one trip to sort of couple of extra ones.
You know, and then there's there's that citywide cleanup coming in. May. And those TVs, they do accept TVs, I think it's five dollars a TV, but. It's a lot cheaper than going to the landfill.
Oh, yeah.
Since we're. City residents here at the courthouse.
Yeah. Yeah, if they're only five bucks, that's a definitely way to go.
Yeah.
Cause I think it's like twenty five bucks a screen. And. Sometimes they measure.
Some of the bigger ones are more money.
Yeah. Oh, that's great, okay. And be a good way to.
Okay. Nothing else, we'll go to public comments. Anybody have any? Comments? We had a good turnout at the legislative forum up in Arlington Saturday morning. And a lot of the Buchanan County residents showed up, which is impressive. In fact, I think we may have outnumbered uh.
We did.
Other candidates.
We did.
Yeah.
Some of us might have got a little feisty.
We're not um. Buchanan County local control of anything doesn't is still in jeopardy.
Yes.
I I I it's not just House filed recent, Senate filed three seventy six, it's it's in jeopardy, I think it's. I. It's not only property rights, they're hiding under property rights is what my take was on that.
Yeah.
Cause that bill was not written to protect anybody.
That doesn't protect people's property rights at all.
That was a door to. Almost like eminent domain.
Yes, that's what it was. Yes, that's exactly what it was hoping to have to, and that is. For me is very scary because I'm a landlord, like everybody else was.
Talked about me authoring a letter on seven, uh, Senate file three seventy six, but obviously died in the funnel, so.
Right.
I assume we don't want to continue with that letter.
But it doesn't. Like keep the keep the blue. Promise it's coming back, it's dear.
I heard that too.
He promised that.
He don't sell on it, he kind of could bring it up every year till he gets it passed.
Well, even it doesn't doesn't protect property rights of the people that sign onto the lease either, because they don't have the right to put that wind turbine where they want to put it. This is gonna take whatever ground they choose to take, and once you open it up, they could put three on it, on your property, they could put ten, depending. That was, you know, I mean, they they say they're protecting property rights, but they're not.
Does anybody know how that how exactly how that bill got knocked out of the hours? Maybe, I mean, I they. I can't remember the term that they used.
It went to subcommittee and the subcommittee said no.
No, the subcommittee.
The subcommittee said three, oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then it went to the the full.
Commerce committee that knocked it out, but what did they do? Did they vote on it? Did they?
I.
Think they voted on them bef- from what I'm listening to legislative sessions, it almost sounds like it goes to the committee. And then they discussed, they discussed it in committee, and then the ones that have amendments and go forward actually get. Heard by the by the people. You know, these are the ones that are going forward, the ones like. Senate file three seventy six never got brought up by full committee. So I thought that it died in their little.
I think you're right, I think it died in committee.
Caucus.
Right.
Yeah, died in caucus, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
That was where that's.
Wasn't enough support for it to hurt to uh.
Move it forward to 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 pass the funnel from there.
So they never voted. And I'm I'm. Don't know exactly what happened after we go from Kansas City to. Within the commerce committee, I I'm lost and I don't know exactly what happens and. You know, if they voted on the bill, if it died because they talked about it ahead of time or just what happened.
I think that as far as I understand about the funnel is that if it's voted to to pursue, to continue ahead, then that committee. Moves it ahead and then that's where it has the eligibility to get past the funnel. But since it was stuck in committee, then I don't think they had the eligibility to continue past the funnel, so it died in funnel.
Excellent, well, what happens, so I think they actually discussed that during their caucus period of time, which nobody is privileged to. So your transparency at your local level is there, but your transparency at the state house isn't always there.
Okay, that explains it, thank you, that explains it, so if they talked about it once themselves and so it just never came up.
Right.
Okay. This is my understanding from speaking with. Consideratives there was that. There the discussion. Was um. More of the matrix, like like our hog buildings are on a matrix, that that is what they were trying to. Push it toward as having state control as they do like where the hog buildings are built. But my argument with that is, the farmer who is having to do all the um. Permits for hog buildings. Owns the building and is responsible for for fallout from that building, whether it's manure or um. Dog, it gets blown up in um. In a in a. Methane or whatever, that is that farmer's responsibility, it's on his ground, he has to clean it up. Or if they're they're leasing it, that farmer doesn't have any say. That that is, that structure is not his.
The other pending legislation that's gonna be coming. Is, you know, back in twenty ten, they passed the Iowa legislation that was gonna. Designate three eighths of a cent. To conservation practices and health fund watersheds and. All the water quality projects and flood control and all these major conservation issues. And to this day, they've never funded that. Now the. Representatives are talking about taking that three eight cents and enacting it, like using it for road road.
Yeah, that was like, oh, the potential of the highways, because there's there's a huge issue with the road issues, the bridges. I have two hundred and sixty bridges that I've funded for one bridge a year.
Although what really concerns me about that, we're throwing this legislation away that we passed fifteen years ago. And gonna go somewhere else with it, and how long are they gonna keep funding that? Or is this another carrot that we get for five years and all of a sudden they take it away? So it's it's kind of frightening.
Um, I had a soil and water commissioner regional meeting. Walk near Wacon, Rossville, whatever, um, and that got brought out this read to the Senate because we're concerned about soil and water and all that stuff. But one issue that the Farm Bureau is kind of lobbying for is. To limit the purchase power the DNR has to buy private ground. Auction, cause that's the cattle. I would love to buy another seventy acres of cattle pasture, but if I go to an auction and I see a green truck there, I might as well just go home.
Yeah.
Because if they get three eighths of a cent, I don't know what the revenue is on a sales tax or statewide area, but. It's gotta be tens of millions. Um, I'm just guessing, but um, so that's one thing the Farm Bureau is trying to limit on that end.
Well, plus, you know, it's taking that ground out of production.
And off the gas base.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's.
It was a small landowner as far as. Public ground, but I think he's increasing it, you know.
It's in the bottom five of the nation as public ground.
Yeah.
And another thing, as a landlord. If the neighbor has sells to public, I don't want some idiot stump limited to my ground, you know. There's little yellow sunwood too, you know, that, there's lots, there's a lot of different. Yeah, avenues and kind of all, yeah.
Anyway, it'll be in another interesting year.
Always is.
And moving back to uh, the other topic, the RTA asked uh, Brian to to put together a a list of unfunded projects.
You want to spell out what RCA means?
Yes, thank you, that's a great idea, uh, Regional Transit Authority, uh, looks for Intercog and I want to come up there, acronym. Um, but would you mind getting into the the report or at least?
Sure, sure, and it's pretty easy to summarize when you're looking at it like this. We just had some real good bids, my bridge came in at six hundred thousand dollars on on the pavement on W thirty five. Been funded for four hundred and ninety thousand a year. I have two hundred and sixty bridges, that doesn't cover that, my year's allocation doesn't cover that one bridge. Painting's even worse. Because we're spending just over seven hundred thousand, just call it seven hundred, ten thousand a mile for these overlays. I get one point five million, just short of one point five. Which means I can basically do two miles of pavement a year. I have two hundred two miles of pavement, so I can get all of my payments in a hundred years.
Kind of the rule of thumb that I saw from your your twenty year report, that was before the amendment, of course, was it's about five million dollars of reconstruction every year.
Is needed.
And we, I mean, where does that come from? So that's that's why we're starting to reach out to. Uh, Iowa legislators and even federal legislators and say, hey, we we've we've pushed this envelope long enough, Dale, I mean. My my cousin Jeremy and I got into civil engineering because we thought there was gonna be job security and then obviously we we split off into something else, cause. The projects weren't there, a- as you said, the job security is still there, but we keep pushing out these these projects and it's. We're pushing the envelope, it's it's past that point.
And go back to two thousand and three, the state couldn't afford all these state highways. So they turned around and dumped hundreds of miles back onto the counties. Um, Buchanan County was second most, we got thirty two miles, both state highways.
And how many bridges?
A bunch of them, but I've got five bridges on that system alone yet that are over seven, or structures, that are over seventy years old. On the road, on the paved roads the state done upon us.
And they did that because they could not afford.
They couldn't afford.
But they know the county.
But I mean, in all sincerity, Dale, that that comes to the conversation, do we start vacating roads and giving them back? I mean, if the numbers are only just you you farmers on the roads, then. You know, maybe we need to have those conversations and say, okay, well, maybe we can talk about damages and things like that, so put it back.
Yeah, uh, what's the weight that the owner just raised to ninety thousand pounds?
Oh, gosh.
About the interstates?
Yes, they can't, they're they can run heavier on the county roads than they can on the interstate system. And.
But there is, they, again, the legislation, they look to ask. Is there uh, both in both uh, both senate and house? That they're going to ask the um, federal to allow. The traffic on interstate highways and and in the surrounding states too of Iowa. So. At least maybe they're looking. To alleviate some of it.
It it doesn't look like it's funded though.
But that was creating more heavier trucks to run on our system too.
So, and then the other side of that argument is those heavier trucks, they're gonna get off the road at some point. So they're still gonna get fuel, they're still gonna go home, they're still gonna unload, you know, all this conversation, so. Are they really sticking to the the federal systems at that point, so it's. Not going the right way for us.
And a lot of damages, according to a study that, I'm not sure he's truly released it all yet, but it's given me the preliminaries and that's Dr. Jalab. Well, they're calling super loads, that's a hundred and twenty five thousand pound loads, but they're also looking at raising the milk haulers permits to a hundred and thirty thousand. That takes about five hundred dollars worth of damage on my concrete payments for every mile they travel. So they buy a five hundred dollar permit. And one that in one mile, they'll do more damage than that permit cost them.
But at the same point in time, are they saving fuel by not having, by increasing their loads? And does that save pollutants into their environment?
It may be saving fuel and it may be saving time, but the it's creating the damages for the roads, so they need to address how they're gonna fund the roads. Or they're just gonna tear them up and we have to go back to rock.
So, uh, to give you an idea about what what is five million dollars worth of reconstruction, this year we're doing the the Kwaski Dag and all, what's?
Took over six million for those.
All right.
That's seven miles.
So we're good this year, next year we're doing, I think, Winthrop to Aurora or something like that.
Yes, and that's because we picked up outside a grant of just under two million and safety funds of just five hundred thousand.
So about how much is that project?
That's about, and I'm forgetting the mileage, close to four miles. And that takes it from Hundred Thirty Street to Corey South Aurora. Down to the cemetery at Hundred Eightieth Street.
Okay, so that's what, three?
Hundred thirty to seventies. Yeah, all right, five, almost, it's about five point two miles, there we go, cause it's got a curve in there that adds a just extra distance.
Oh, sorry, as far as funding goes, about how many dollars is that roundabout?
Uh, that one's not quite so bad, cause I don't have any big bridges in there, and um. I I. Yeah, let me think on this little bit, I got. Two million coming in from Intercog and five hundred thousand from safety funds, that's two point five million. I wanna put it in the four million category, so my stuff is forced. Yeah.
So ballpark numbers.
We're running at seven hundred, about seven hundred, I probably was estimating that at seven thirty or seven fifty.
So doing.
Per mile.
So doing six million on the Kwaski diagonal is is keeping us just ahead of the range. Uh, you know, Aurora, excuse me, LaMont Road down to uh, to Town Street, is that what you said?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty.
It's at the cemetery corner.
So there's there's about ten million dollars between those two years, but we can't keep up that pace after that, we're already borrowing funds to get that project.
Yeah, we even definitely borrow to the maximum.
So that's. That's the pace that we're looking at as far as replacing bridges and pavements and things like that.
But we're not borrowing, we're not taking a bond from you.
No, 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 it's, but I borrow it from the account, so I I'm allowed to borrow.
You're right.
Ahead about three years, so in other words, I'm borrowing three years on the red in my farm market account. And I've always run that way, cause I'll get more money done this year, I'll get farther this year with my monies than if I waited two years or three years.
Because everything goes up.
Yep.
They'll let you borrow backwards in time and they'll let you borrow ahead in time.
You can store, yeah.
Can't do anything, you know, whatever funds you have in between.
Yep. And then I've got another road sneaking up on me and that's north of Winthrop where the agri- not north of Jessup where the aggregate's going to pieces. And it's, the deterioration's really accelerating on that, we had geologists out from the IODOT last year. They're saying, yeah, that's that quarry's no longer approved. So the rock and the quarry is going to pieces.
Okay, anything else for public comment? Yes.
Um, two things, I'm gonna get back to the winter rides. Um. You can, Don, maybe you've seen it on a Facebook page, of course, I'm gonna get back to the. Maybe you've seen it, and I can't remember which page it was on. Um, a county. Got in their wex for setbacks, it was like thirty two hundred and fifty feet or something, because they got a hold of the data sheets. From the company that made the produce the windburns and that recommendation was on the company's data sheet. Now, another county. Tried to get, they're working with Nextera, Nextera is refusing to give them the data sheets.
Safety data sheet.
And, yeah.
Yes.
And so, I mean, that's, it's just something that sits in the back of your mind, that it's, you know, should a bill like this go through our cap for bid. Um, that this would make a a great court case to challenge that bill. As it has to be treated, the tax on them, they were awful. The three sixteen. The three seventy six. Um. Because you can get the data sheets, the safety data sheets.
Right, that's a law. Yeah, and I and I understand, you know, Senator Clemish was, you know, he he was saying that. Half the counties have moratoriums right now, and we're one of those counties, we do have a moratorium, but we're working on something, working on a comprehensive land use plan. Prior to taking, removing the moratorium, so, you know, I think that what. I think the counties are trying to react to it, it's just we're having to stop everything long enough to make that reaction and to do that. And I don't feel like they're really um. Understanding.
I don't think that's a part of it, but um, where is the moratorium right? I mean, I know it comes up in May again. Is that something that's going to be renewed or are we not going to just leave it while?
I don't think you're far enough on the uh. Comprehensive plan. They have that done by May, are you?
Or are. Prove.
Upheaving.
Prove them right now, so. We are moving on it, it's just, we wanted to make sure that. Our comprehensive plan is what it needs to be.
I'm not trying to pressure you guys. I just try to look at the timeline, so we may have to renew that wax uh, moratorium.
Yeah, we worked on some. Different month since it was decided. But, you know, you can always sell a vast and be.
Right.
Over the times, you're right. And.
I would rather be the tortoise on this one and get it right.
Right, exactly.
We've seen enough nightmares in other counties that that's the right thing to do.
And, you know, they they try and dangle that carrot of the tax revenues that you're gonna get off of these burdens. But what it does to our future land use. With all that concrete and rebar in the ground, it's never gonna go away. I would hate to be responsible for doing that to Buchanan County.
The other thing is, we talked about. The damage. Radical damage done to road bases. From the amount of of truck traffic, yeah. Yeah, they put them back the way they were, but I I would venture to say they can't put the ground back to the way it was. How can they put the roads back to the way they were?
I remember sending out a magnet, a a truck pulled magnet three different times because you you wouldn't think that this would come up, but just rebuilding fences and then the 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 folks that are rebuilding the fences, they're not locals. They just do what they needed to do. And then so we found nails all over the gravel roads. So I mean, it it's just things that you just never expect.
Well, and then, you know, you go back to, did they put the fence back in where it should have been?
All those conversations, yeah.
Yep, because that's that's important to the country. But they don't unders- corporate America does not understand production agriculture and they don't wanna learn either. That's why they blew up the turbine to clean it up and now they have a real mess in their hands.
Of course, they're gonna sequester all that good topsoil they pull out and eat that for you.
Yeah.
They just say dirt is dirt instead of a living river.
Yeah.
So you, I mean, that it's just a divide and I don't I don't know what the difference, but it is a huge divide that the corporate American doesn't understand. And I think that's, I think that's the whole problem, bottom line for the nutshell. Even on the roads, though, they, the way that bill is written, it's very vague on the roads. It does not, you know, it it takes a lot of responsibility off the wind companies.
While most of us geared toward the initial construction, it doesn't talk about five years down the road when they have to come in with these big cranes to do maintenance projects or whatever it might be, what damages happen then? And it they pretty much ignore that.
There's your superload again at the five hundred and thirty five dollars damage per mile.
Are you're what?
There's always so much money there.
Not only production agriculture, but they don't understand that we live in, we live in a beautiful place that has wildlife. We have marshes and they don't care about those either. They would rather pay the fine, walk away. We would rather we would rather build our wildlife and our and our our what we live in and.
Well, Brian and I got into that discussion on the way back from Arlington about the difference in population densities in some of these rural counties that maybe have a full population of five thousand people in the entire county. It's a lot more wide open than it is in Buchanan County.
Yep.
And.
You need a Starbucks.
Okay, anything else for the good of the cause?
I don't have anything to.
That one comments, um, yeah, back to the opioid thing and and being involved in in education. Um, we used to do this when beginning of the year, different times. I mean, celebrities like our our county sheriff come and hand out pencils or, you know, for the dare and don't and that type of thing. And get people that make it more meaningful to be there at the beginning. There's all kinds of enthusiasm. And you can do it more than once a year, but you know, people are gonna donate money to buy the pencils for you or the ink pens or or uh whatever sticks the kids use, knowing that we don't wanna do that because that's probably a drug type thing. But you know what I mean? I mean, something that that they'll that they enjoy and and even high school kids. I mean, they're surprised when somebody's there and oh, here's the here here's the the dare officer, the don't officer, whichever. Do the Buchanan County um sheriff, um, he was our our dare officer. No, 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 um, Black Mountain, excuse me. Oh, um, who's that just retiring this year? Thompson. Tony Thompson was one that he created adult program rather than the dare program because that way they've got more leeway. So I mean, there's things and and even the high school kids were appreciative of getting something given to them, but you gotta create some excitement with it. I mean, just just handing out something. I know the bags are a great idea, but just handing it out is like, okay, what's this? Well, I'm eating my popcorn, I'm gonna smash it, I'm gonna throw it in the garbage and or I'm gonna leave it under the leechers, which let us clean up. But anyway.
To follow along with that.
Yeah.
It might be good to maybe look and say, are there some local area sports heroes?
Yes.
That could appear at something like that.
Sweet.
I am just Robert Galory kinda came to mind, but but there's other ones too.
So having our local state sheriff, isn't it?
But you know, you could do something like this at at uh when I was at Wild Sea Valley, we had multiple buildings. And we get the high school kids. I I know Scott, if you were one of them that came during a homecoming week, had their jerseys on, had like a mini pep rally for the elementary kids. And the kids went nuts. I mean, they idolized their high school athletes because they wanted to be like them and because there was a lot of success and so there's there's little things you can do that don't cost a whole lot of money, but we gotta create some excitement and get kids get the kids involved and take things home and.
You can do some state wrestlers, these state trackers, I mean, those individuals.
You got heroes in your own school district.
I know Jessup has a club in the high school and it's it's not just athletes, but just kids that people look up to and they're kind of nominated by their teachers. And so I work with the advisor, but yeah.
Anyway, I mean, one other point, getting back to the turbine thing, is the scary thing is he mentioned he's gonna bring up this bill, Kalish did. And he also mentioned was that Wisconsin and Illinois are basically eminent domain and and we don't wanna be like those other states. We're we're different. We're Iowa and and we all have our own needs. So that is that is very concerning to me. And you got a guy that's not gonna change his mind and you got a guy that's that mentioned that, oh, you know, I I I'm a thorn in the side of all these energy companies, but if you look at who's donated money to it, he's got a lot of money coming from those people and even uh Ready Mix Pro, which is big up in West Iowa, and they make all kinds of money if we put another seventy or a hundred turbines up there.
And now the cannibalized concrete and materials from Brian.
Well, and and another thing, another thing too, and I probably mentioned this many times, but Tama County around Gladbro, they've extended their the height and had got new turbines in there. They're leaking already. And they're not even a year old. So I mean, we're getting more and more garbage and and the and the production is is junk. Plus, they, you kind of mentioned this earlier, is the original thing is fix the roads. Well, it's the same company that owns them. And guess what? The next time they went and replaced those, um, they weren't gonna get any, I mean, they weren't gonna repair those roads. It's the county's responsibility, which basically is the taxpayer's responsibility. So I mean, there's all kinds of native things and and, you know, our, no matter what they do, our utility rates go up.
It's for research, huh?
But the I will say that the zoning commission was there in force. And we did go with our wex ordinance that we had already had been approved. And and we shared the wex, our wex ordinance with our representatives. They have a copy in hand.
I think the biggest concern that I had about Senator Clemish's statements was, well, these these wind companies, they're not gonna use eminent domain and well, that's true. It's the transmission companies that are gonna put up the transmission lines that are gonna use eminent domain. So it's it's.
It's a it's.
Side of its mouth, yeah, seriously.
And the worrisome thing is that there was a hundred and eighty one and a couple people responded twice on the comment sheet on the subcommittee. And I asked if he read those and he didn't answer.
No.
So to me, the answer was he didn't. They don't care. My mind's made up. I'm confused with the facts.
I think he made the comment that he wanted to reintroduce the bill because there need to be discussion on it. And unfortunately, that's not a good sign.
Well, and and in that half hour committee meeting, subcommittee meeting, there were people from all over the state that drove two, three hours to be there to be able to be heard and they didn't get to it because they they stalled the time and.
That was a panic. There's there's a lot of people there. Go ahead.
How does a lobbyist burn, register at the table?
And be the first one to speak.
They have to get certified and yeah, but they probably know exactly what their uh politician wants them to say, so.
And the other thing too is that two out of the three people were from Polk County. What do they know about, what we've just been talking about, the rural area? You know, and again, I know one of them for sure was had the same findings as all the utility companies as well as Next Era and those type of things. So anyways, something we need to be prepared for next year and the year after and and we gotta get it stopped. And maybe the biggest, the easiest thing to do would be to cut off the subsidies. Where's that money right now? How much money is available? Nobody ever talks about that. You know, and 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 really, where's the ledger that actually says that we we are benefiting financially as a state, not just the the cement companies and the other companies, but you know, the crews that go out, you know, the two people that were killed in the turbine accident in Nebraska, they didn't even live in Nebraska, they're from Colorado.
No, Las Vegas.
Oh, Las Vegas, excuse me. And and I know when I went up to New Hampton, when they were building theirs, the middle of their construction, I mean, those guys were from uh Louisiana and Oklahoma and they had just been from a job somewhere else and and then we've got, and I'll use another example. Um, Buchanan County with the Ethanol Plant. It was at fifteen years before we got one cent tax dollars on the property.
You know, they're still protesting.
Yeah, and and so every time you have a subsidiary, you know, and Next Era has a hundred and thirty one of them, that they're gonna have somebody else buy it and they're gonna start the ball all over again and the taxes are gonna be delayed and all those type of things. So it just amazes me that the the big poof and, you know, the sky and all this money that's gonna be. Yeah, it is.
Just remember all those subsidies that they're getting are ta- our tax dollars.
Yes, coming out of our pockets, exactly.
It's not government funded, it's taxpayer.
Representative Tiffany gets his way, those um those subsidies will be gone on ag land.
I got a feeling if Elon Musk does, they'll be gone, but.
Well, there's a there's an act in Washington now trying to become a bill. And since last year he brought it, uh Representative Tiffany brought it out, um and it was ignored. This year's a different Washington. So I'm hoping that it gets some recognition this year and that he makes us uh makes us go because they will take off all subsidies for um wind turbines and and over, so we're put on ag land.
Also, when you're talking one thousand eight hundred tons of concrete per turbine and it's sixty feet across and you leave it in the ground, like you said, and on a hundred to seventy tons of rebar. Well, if you're making one thousand eight hundred tons of concrete per turbine, you put seventy of them up. Well, I bet that cement guy is really licking his chops, isn't he? And there's something big blood's coming out there, isn't there? A little background there too, they do occasionally run out of Portland cement. End up shutting down paving projects and I know some that got delayed into the next year because of the shortage of Portland.
Really?
Yep.
And one of the things is I know I know that once they're up there, they're not pollutants, but the hundred and seventy tons of coal it takes to make the pedestal, just the pedestal alone. What's that doing to the environment? Hundred and seventy tons of coal, just for one.
If it was really profitable, that's how would you put them up?
Yeah. Subsidies.
I I can't remember how many gallons of oil it takes to lubricate though, but it's it's ma- it's like fifty gallons or something. It's ma- and it has to be changed out.
Oh, we've seen a fern, so that's more than fifty gallons.
All right, I would uh entertain a motion for it. All favor? All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate your comments. What's that?